I would, and then I wouldn't say that. I should get them.
Yes. And so.
The one I.
For life.
But then some turn.
All right, we'll call the December 9th, the City Council. Oh, pile five plus three.
Hi, let me introduce the fire of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands. One nation, our God, and the people who live in justice.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alexander, here. Councilmember Brennan, here. Councilmember Brinker.
Here.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri, here. Councilmember Stevenson.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. Through the minutes from November fifth and December second, please.
Okay.
Motion for a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
How much comments or requests? I'm ready to see back there. You can have one. Uh, four B exposure weather alley, the Melton Avenue, the second reading.
Second reading, nothing has changed. It would be through the twenty seventh of this month.
I'm going to.
Okay.
Motion for a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Do you have any other requests?
I've none, Your Honor.
Finished with the five A lead copper service line update.
The council was provided the EPA fact sheet regarding lead and copper service lines. Um, this is a process that uh, the city has been doing for the last year. You probably have noticed other municipalities have been um, doing newspaper articles about the lead and service line. Um, inventory that needs to be done as part of the federal requirements. The city has three thousand two hundred and sixty six service lines in the system. And three hundred and ninety six of those involve a single line that goes into a multiple use dwelling. An example of that would be a dorm at Lock Haven University. Um, so of our inventory, the city has confirmed one thousand two, um, one thousand nine hundred and twenty nine. Um, known characteristics of the service line. And we had nine hundred and thirty nine that were unknown. To date though, um, since October, sixty five percent have been completed. And in the service areas of Wayne and Castania Township, there are only twenty nine service lines that we still need to determine whether they are lead and copper. It's exceptionally unlikely. Because they are things like um, the UPMC Center that used to be the mall that were built in the nineties. The city outlawed the use of lead um, in the nineteen sixties. So that isn't. Uh, the landfill also postates that um, the landfill is multiple dimensions at one pipe. So um, of those twenty nine, at least half of them, probably three users total um, and multiple. But those have all been scheduled and we do have P and C mediation tomorrow. That's a topic that they were invested in. So we'll be able to report to them that those twenty nine in what they call jurisdictional areas um, are actually scheduled. Other people will have gotten in the mail if your service line was not physically viewed by the Public Works Department, you will have gotten a letter in the mail. If you would please call um, the number in that letter, then we'll be able to schedule a time that's convenient for you to come out and view your line just to ensure that it is not.
Now.
Hold on, hold on.
Any else on that?
Nothing, Your Honor.
It's five B reapportment of the Clinton County PCC delegates.
The tax collection committee delegates. Report counsel for your consideration for next year. Those would be myself as the main delegate, the alternate Wendy Spiker. And the second delegate would be Finance Clerk Erin Green.
Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the delegates. I'll second.
Motion for a second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Any open or something?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
It is. Public hearing on twenty twenty five proposed budget. Purpose of the hearing is before the public, an opportunity to comment and make observations on the recommended budget as reflected in ordinances number twenty twenty four dash zero six and twenty twenty four dash zero seven. Comments from the agencies and organizations in the city. We have police parking.
We have police, parking, fire codes, zoning and property maintenance tonight. Um, just to kick off before the, I turn it over to the chief. This evening is public safety. That accounts for forty six pennies of every dollar that's paid to the city in taxes. It's spent on public safety between uh, police, fire and code enforcement and zoning. Um, zoning being the rules and regulations we agree to as a community to live by. Be good neighbors. Um, so the police department. Start with that entity. That alone is thirty three cents of every dollar that you pay in taxes. So about a third of what you pay for is the protection from the police department and their oversight. Eighty five percent of that money goes to wages and benefits for the officers themselves. Eleven percent is for obligations and contractual up agreements. Four percent is what remains that is actually what would be called operations or somewhat discretionary. And um, that is about seventy five or seventy eight thousand of the one point nine million dollar budget. So there, as always, isn't a lot of wiggle room. You get tired of me saying that. However, for that investment, uh, the police department does uh, retain twenty four hour coverage. And has accomplished a lot this year and the chief will speak to that and some of the goals for next year.
Good evening. How's everybody tonight? Thank you. I want to thank you first and foremost, our city manager for supporting this department and myself throughout the year, to take a good year. As you will see in the budget, there's a lot of compliments, compliments to the background. A bunch of goals that I had for twenty twenty, or we managed to read most of what I was told, but you can see. I don't want to go too far into those. I'd rather talk a little bit about some exciting things that happened along with those goals that and a few of the goals for twenty five. Uh, one of the biggest things that we were managed to get this year is a grant to hire. Uh, received a PCCD grant for fourteen thousand dollars to hire two additional officers. We were having a terrible time finding qualified applicants to hire. Uh, the first round, I think we had three applicants. And of those three applicants, uh, one never showed up, one did not pass the P and D test and the other wasn't qualified to be hired. So that put me back to, oh man, what are we gonna do? So advocate Roberts, God bless her and all the hard work that she does. We managed to give fourteen thousand dollars through a grant to hire police officers for, I'm sorry, to hire applicants. Or recruits, if you will, that don't have that one. Send this academy. So we're very excited about that. Uh, testing, the application period ends January seventeenth. We'll be testing on January twenty fifth and the academy will begin in May. So it's a really good positive thing for the department and for the city. Uh, the other very exciting thing that we have is the Center for Community Resources receiving grant for co-responder. They have co-responders in the time that we spend trying to get them to the resources that they need, whether it be the hospital or three oh two or two oh one commitment, whatever the case might be. Best part about the co-responder is part of their job is to follow up. So right now, when we take somebody to the hospital for three oh two commitment or something like that. If in fact they are three oh two, they are, we kind of end there. This will give the opportunity for that person to receive additional follow-up and help, if you will, from the co-responder. So I think that will reduce the rate of repeat calls that we get to certain individuals that are in crisis. So we're really excited about that. You through the Center for Community Resources, we interviewed and they, we collaboratively agreed to hire a young lady named Eliza Shaw. She's from the Melton area. She has quite a bit of experience. She came on word about almost three weeks ago with them and they're doing all their own work and training now. Hopefully she will be on the road within hopefully the next week or so with the department. So I think it's a fantastic opportunity for, for everybody in the community. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more happy to answer.
Not necessarily for the chief, but for Gray possibly. Uh, professional services on page thirty three. Thirty one, one, one O. Is that the vet force?
No.
Where is that? Where do we find that force in here?
Uh, that would be in department four zero nine. In four ten, the professional services, that's a combination of um, auditing, legal, any outside contractor that would be needed. Most of that in the police department goes to legal.
The uh, I guess I have to look under four four oh nine to figure that out. What I was leaning towards was it's all, and I don't know, is it coming to page added four or?
Sure, it's page twenty seven.
Twenty seven. Then under, what's it?
It would either be professional services or contracted. I think in this one, it's professional or access. It's looking at what appeared to be.
Have we explored? I know when you first put them in, um, that was the way to go with, and the vet force sitting on our front door. I've been with the state police barracks. I've been to other places that they have a clerk behind a secure window. And I'm sure that we could get for an awful lot less. Might take a little reconstruction, but would you look into for the future? Uh, maybe later this year as a project or across savings? If we would power a curb clerk that would, and a lot less than that. And then have double duty doing the door work and you don't let anybody, unless somebody comes down, you'd have to establish a procedure. But I'm looking to eliminate some more costs. And I think that might be a way to start just by looking into it. Not saying you, I'm not pounding my piss down saying you can't. But I'm looking for an alternative to that, to that expenditure. Then we could utilize it and then we could also have a person work and do other things, taking their current officer territory work. That's one thing for police department that, that I had questioned.
Well, we can work with the chief to see if there is.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. Just work on it and see how that is. I can't pick out exactly where it is other than unless it was like health insurance really enough. I don't know. But overall, police increase budget a hundred fifty seven thousand. So I'm looking to try to find some places. I'm sure you scoured it. I'm sure the chief has too. But that, we don't have a lot of, like you say, wiggle room at the end of the year for carryover or for, for any incidentals. So just exploring budget on the one side.
Yeah, we have um, very little room for savings itself in the police force. Uh, we did implement some savings this year because one of the vehicle leases inspired and we didn't turn around to purchase a new vehicle. But that will need to be purchased next year. Um, so we have one that's a little too old and what we do if it's general fund, generally speaking, that's paid for it, we try to transfer that vehicle to another general fund department that doesn't need a truck but needs a vehicle to run around in because we've already paid for it. If it gets transferred to another fund, like the water fund, then the water fund pays the general fund for the salvage. Uh, but the salvage value that we use is we do five-year leases with the early loans, but regardless, so five-year loans. Um, but we divide that by six for the value. So there is a salvage value at the end so that we have something on paper to be able to say this now has a value of nine thousand dollars that we can transfer from one fund to another and that payment can be made. Uh, so next year we will get back on track with that, but this year just because of not knowing how finances would end as the budget comes around and knowing that we were seeing health insurance go up quite a bit. Uh, we did try to find a way to repay some of that. This year, fortunately for us, retirement, um, the amount that we got from the state to subsidize that was greater than what we had budgeted, which is always the savings, but nothing that can be counted on because even our actuary has a difficult time trying to guess what the state's gonna actually put out there for the next year. But wow. Hopefully that trend continues. It's been two years in a row that the state has subsidized a greater share of the leases.
You got a question. Just thank you for everything that you and your force does. We appreciate your service.
Bring it. I'd be in favor the, the window. I know we had talked about it last year.
Yeah.
Uh, as well. We definitely get some savings there and still have a safe environment for employees as well. But I know we talked about the parking meters last year and I see that that is a downtown goal for next year. Uh, have you looked into it this year at all or is it on the back burner or? Cause I know Bloomsburg does the, the zips and I know cost effectiveness and try to eliminate cause all our meters are getting old and maybe even doing a transitional phase of some sort. I'm not sure what you.
Yeah, I.
Your direction and cost savings because we could even maybe decrease some of our meters.
Oh, they're, and they're, they're antiques and to get parts and pieces for it is almost impossible at this point. So the uh, metering force of officers have been making new, if you will, by moving meters and swapping parts and pieces. Um, as far as looking into it, there's a company, there's numerous companies out there that do the kiosks. And that's kind of where my vision is, at least to begin with, maybe the parking lots with the kiosk. We need to come up with a plan for the downtown area. Now that would eliminate all the meters from the parking lots, which
Would be used for parts, at least if they could make a transition, transition from.
Right. Yes, exactly. Um, we weren't really in a position this year, twenty twenty four, uh, financially, I don't think. There was more than too much. Um, uh, city manager Wilson and I did speak about it several times. In this coming year, we're gonna actually get into exploring it and get the costs. Problem I did want to start is happen due is if I reach out to a vendor or three or four vendors, looking and exploring things, I'm not quite ready yet. They don't stop calling me and texting me.
They're gonna sell.
I know, I know. So I'm gonna try to prepare, wait for that right time when we know we're gonna want to move ahead. It's often, look, it's often, it's time to get that started.
Yeah, a lot of things we do, we don't do all at once, every parking lot. You might try and start with one, if it's successful, and make corrections for the next one and phase it in. We have to, we don't have to have that expenditure all one year.
Okay, the last estimate, which was a budget time last year, was just shy of thirty thousand to do one block of parking meters. Um, modern parking meters come with an extra charge that our existing ones don't, which is a monthly charge of about four dollars and eighty cents was the last quote, because they're miniature cell phones, because you use your.
They're providing a lot of using car.
Yeah, so um, and they don't come without that feature. So um, that puts meters almost an untouchable place when the cost of the multi-space parking stations like the kiosks uh, become significantly less than that. So um, I do like what the chief said about exploring the lots first, because we could do a couple of those at the entrances, the lots, the priuses and and uh, capture that, be able to reuse those meters elsewhere now.
Granted.
Any else?
I can pause on the Melton Avenue. Would, would the um, ones that pay to, reflecting from a meter, actually pay for the meter itself?
Don't know because we haven't bought new ones in
I don't.
Along.
We have no cost for meters. We don't buy, we just keep repairing and putting them back.
No, I mean, to buy the new meters, like it's not, you said thirty thousand dollars for one city block. How long will it take to pay them off?
I wouldn't know that today, but that's part of what study would show that we would do to come up with where it's cost effective to do it. Um, a lot of people on the council have gotten questions too about Akeley Lane. Just to give you an update, this year alone, a hundred and twenty nine parking tickets have been issued on Akeley Lane. Uh, so it's definitely not an area that's overlooked. That equals one percent of the total of the tickets that we issue in the city. So it definitely is on the radar. We do have, I know a lot of people also get frustrated about the um, one night a week that your car has to be moved off the.
Wall street.
Sweeper night.
Yep.
Wall.
Sweeper night. Um, there are thirty streets in the city that over the course of a year, and there are fewer people get parking tickets because of that. And there are actually eleven streets that we should probably put awards on because they have one or fewer of those tickets issued in the course of the year. So um, there are definitely streets that you can all but see that no one even reads those signs, but there are definitely places people are incredibly compliant with that. And um, the reason that does exist is to make sure that there aren't abandoned vehicles on the city streets. And that's why you have to move it once per week. Um, we do have instances, several occasions when people will get several tickets. Um, and the police department does reach out to those individuals almost every time it's a disabled vehicle and the police are able to help them find a way to get that repaired. A lot of times it's somebody who just doesn't know what to do. Because if the car won't start. So what am I supposed to do? But the police have resources and contacts to be able to help people with that. So it does help.
Anything else? Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Thank you. On the fire.
On to the next chief. Uh, fire department is uh, seventy three percent of the expenditures are on wages, fourteen percent on obligations. Only a quarter of a percent is trained, is training and education because a lot of that is covered by other entities. About twelve percent or sixty eight thousand is for operations, which is the only place we really get a little bit of variability. Um, Chief Woodings here this evening to talk about some of the accomplishments and some of the goals for next year.
Okay, so this past February, we had our ISO devaluation. I'm happy to report that we maintained a class three rating. Uh, just put that in perspective. We share that class three rating with only three thousand other fire departments in the United States. And there's about forty thousand fire departments in the United States. So for a small city like Lock Haven, I consider that a very good accomplishment. Uh, our next evaluation will be in twenty twenty nine and we're obviously hoping to upgrade that to a class two. Uh, just to share with you some of the statistics this past year. Ninety percent of structure fires in the city were confined to the room of origin. Uh, we conducted thirty four public education outreach programs. We conducted twenty four pre-incident plans of high-value commercial properties. And our firefighters completed over six hundred hours of training and education. I want to point that out because uh, I want you to see that we do a lot more than just do. Uh, if you look down our budget, you're going to see that our maintenance has doubled in the past two years. Two primary reasons for that is increased call volume and our aging fleet of apparatus. Uh, three pieces of our apparatus currently are thirty six years old. FPA recommends that by twenty five years of age, they're placed out of service. That's just not something we can do. We have to run this long as we can. We're in the process of applying for various grants, hopefully replace some of that apparatus, downsize and go to the more multi-use vehicle. Uh, that kind of leads into my next discussion. One area that I'd like to explore is tapping into insurance reimbursement. When someone takes out a policy, money set aside in that policy for emergency service reimbursement. Fire department hasn't ever gone after that money. Uh, in a camp, council whip is, I can give with the fire advisor board and come up with a report. Send that to you next month sometime.
I would think it'd be prudent for us to take a look at it at least.
Are you looking for an answer? Always, my fifty seven years, we always said we didn't test our own or inquire about insurances for our residents in the city because they're already paying for everything else. They're paying over a half a million dollars out of their tax nodding now. I'm not sure we should be tapping their insurance companies to, to generate income either. It's a benefit they have to live in the city. Now, all the other calls that you go on outside of the city, some are mutated through fire and, and motor vehicle accidents and everything else. If they're lymphocysts and P R S calls, then I think yes, outside of the city, you should be asking for reimbursement because you're running your pieces and fuel and manpower time and everything else for that service. That's almost like a contract service it should be. But I'm just not leaning towards getting the insurance for, for calls.
I'm not saying it is true to you.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that it didn't.
Just having to explore, you know, doesn't mean we, we go there. Having the information isn't, isn't a bad thing, but.
I agree a hundred percent. I think you should present the information. And if it's something that doesn't result in an extra cost to a taxpayer and that money's being left on the table, money that would have been available to our fire department at no extra cost to the homeowner or to the taxpayer. I think we should be looking at that.
And it doesn't mean you choose to go there. Chief makes a ballot.
Yeah, absolutely that. But, but by the same token, if that money is available to the homeowner and it doesn't cost anything extra, even if they are a city taxpayer. Then I think that if we're leaving that and not collecting it from the insurance company, that we, we really need to know what is that costing us each year? And if that's something that's a benefit that's out there, we need to be looking at it. So I say look at it and bring it back to us on the snow.
I think, I think like the mayor said, the only way to know one way or the other is to actually get more information. So if um, you're in favor of Chief Woody bringing you more information so you can make the decision on what you want to do, if anything.
We have a consensus about getting the head bob.
Yes.
Most of council, so.
Okay, you got the head bob. It's worth a lot. I don't get a lot. It's in my mind, man.
And, and you don't?
Nope, that's it, unless you have any questions for me.
Questions, pardon me. I have questions for Gray. Uh, this probably you're not in the numbers here, but the insurance for property, since the two fire departments now own their own property. Why are we spending thirty six hundred dollars worth of insurance?
Uh, that's what you're thinking of is, is really more wrapped in to the liability. The property itself is the property and equipment that the city owns, um, that is not real estate per se, although that is a portion of what gets put in there. But the only property that we insured was what used to be HOPE HOBS. We don't have insurance on the actual buildings for hand-in-hand or for citizens. We don't have insurance on the actual buildings for hand-in-hand or for citizens. Those, they have to insure themselves because they're not city-owned property. Yeah, so it isn't impacted by hand-to-hand. Being or not being an active part, and we still have the same amount of equipment, so that retains.
Does it jump from fifteen hundred dollars to thirty-six hundred?
We still don't have. Or actual. Quote yet from Penn Prime or auto property and liability. So what you see in there is the same we paid this year. Will be what is in there as a placeholder for next year. We should be receiving that hopefully this week. Um, but we did see property from twenty-three jump up in twenty-four, but everyone did nationwide. Because of the number of catastrophes that have happened, and so. We saw uh, around a fifty-one percent in property go up. Uh, elected officials, uh, insurance also went up, but police professionals did not go up as much. It varies and a lot of the insurance that we have is two-year contracts, so like our auto. We'll see a change this year, but shouldn't have seen that significant of a change before.
But I was gonna mention out of the next, remind us. That jumped up almost fourteen thousand dollars. And we don't have any more equipment and it's it's lower.
That's because we got an appraisal done. In twenty-three and. The insurance company. And so the appraisal of the vehicles changed. To replacement value. So that's what we have on the fire truck.
That's a lot of cash. Uh, because all this comes out of general fund.
Yes.
Years ago. Here I go back again. If we lost an axe, it broke the handle, we came and got an axe in the handle. If it needed repairs, we took it, it was cheaper to just continue to do repairs. Or servicing whatever, whatever it took than it was to be insurance poor. So.
We don't ensure any of the examples, we just use them.
It says auto. Insurance auto fourteen thousand dollars.
But I don't ensure the act.
No.
I ensure the replacement cost of the vehicle was.
Well, it's not under, you said it was under property. Equipment and supply.
But none of that is listed as something that we own as an asset. It would be like a generator or. Um. Something like the, the CBA's.
So if we wreck our fire truck. At thirty-five years old, they're going to replace it, replacement cost.
Appropriated.
My homeowner's insurance did something like that a few years ago, where they came around, reevaluated and. Praise my insurance. I now have new homeowners. Is there a way we can look at it different? Policy?
Is that all come through Penn Prime?
Yeah.
I wonder who's in charge of that.
I do, I do.
So, those things jumping out, and it looked, it actually looked at the budget.
But we don't actually know what the figures are going to be.
That's not a new surprise number, that's last year's.
Well, last year's was seventy-five hundred, but the year, but they spent fourteen thousand. So it jumped in the middle of the year somewhere an extra, it doubled. The year-to-date doubled.
Six fourteen to fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in six months, it went up seven thousand dollars.
No, last year was also a placeholder. Didn't know what it was, because we didn't know what it was. You adopted the budget without having the final figure.
Alright.
Which is why I hope they come in this, this week.
Also, they're not in yet. So their contracted services also. What are they contracting for thirty-eight thousand dollars?
Lick. Almost exclusively, that's all repairs from a contractor. On the fire apparatus.
Alright, because it says vehicle maintenance, I would think like would be under vehicle maintenance.
Vehicle maintenance is actually what we do in-house.
Which jumped up seven thousand dollars. So is it costing more now for oil changes and? I'm late, you got away from that recently, replace the tire thing. If you try to keep up with an FPA, but every, in every single standard you have. No municipality in the world can afford it. So that change in tires every so. They don't get that many miles. So then you're going to eliminate it.
Well, I didn't. That's the placeholder why that jumped up. So vehicle maintenance includes tire replacement.
How many miles a year do you put on the truck? One, two, three thousand. I run my tires forty, fifty thousand miles, and even I change them every ten thousand. That's pretty. I know fire equipment's a lot different, you have to be safe, you have to have good tires. But. Five years worth of. Painless. Okay, let me move on. And then I see the tool thing. Jumped up to seven thousand dollars again. We used to give each department, what, fifteen hundred dollars? And they use that for incidental, small hand tools and other things. Now, seventy-one, one oh one is at seven thousand bucks. Of course, it was seventy-one hundred last year. And we didn't spend it all.
Well, they will by the end of the year.
They will hurry up and spend that, so then.
Well, they don't hurry up. They, for me, it say whether or not it's safe to spend it.
Okay.
And for a couple of years, they haven't spent anything. And so we went from fifteen hundred dollars to thirty-five hundred a couple of years ago. Um, per company, but it's still just thirty-five hundred per company to do upgrades of some of their hoses, things like that. Um. They probably won't spend the thirty-five hundred in total. But uh, they were given the go-ahead, I guess, two weeks ago to go ahead and. And spend that money based on where we estimate the year-end to come in at.
Because it says on tools and issue. Our machine's over five thousand dollars, so what the expenditure is over five thousand. I'm just saying, so what, what are you going to spend it on?
Well, that's just.
Yeah, over.
But each company will get three thousand.
There's a category for under five thousand there too though. Supplies and repairs, operating supplies. That, that's down already.
But if I move that seven thousand into operating supplies, you're just going to ask me why operating supplies went up seven thousand dollars?
Probably.
Okay.
You know me, that's how I am. I need, it's part of my. Inspector training, to look at these things and ask questions. About, just, yeah, justify it to me and I'll shake my head. And as long as I, I know the answer to things. Doesn't mean I always agree with it, you know, then our overall budget. Is uh, pretty important, and I really watch closely on the general fund expenditure, and I'm sure you do too. But sometimes you just, this. Luckily, the fire department has only gone up twenty-five thousand over last year's budget, so that, that's a little bit down pretty good. And I don't mind a small decrease. Things cost more. Now the wages for that, I put the wages that went up. Right, so that uh.
Right, they went up.
That jumps on.
One point four.
Yeah.
Uh. They do. You know, we, I think we all internally watch the general fund closely, because every time that a fund is overspent. Or overdrawn, that actually is cash out of the general fund. So even though you, you will adopt this budget. Internally, if. Is over three hundred thousand dollars, I've already subtracted three hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund. So although it says on paper you can spend this, no one in the city thinks that they have. By default, seven thousand dollars to just go spend something. Every department asks, is it safe to spend that money? Because that could very well be one of the placeholders for the three hundred thousand that X is over spent. So it's important that you receive a balanced budget. But if the budget shows an excess of three hundred thousand dollars. That's covering this one that's overdrawn, you also run the risk that people will look at that and say. A, our taxes are too high, which is not ac, not accurate. Or B, they're going to look at that and say, oh, you have three hundred thousand dollars, here's what we'd like you to spend it on. But you don't have three hundred thousand dollars. So that's why it goes into line items in the budget, some of which you say, but last year we only spent fifty dollars. Well, that's true, and it may say twenty thousand dollars, but that's one of the places that we're stocking away the overdraft of another one. And so we don't intend to spend. I don't know, he's saying with the parking meters. That will definitely. That, that was uh, an expenditure for this year, but it did not get expended because the cash on hand was simply not there. So. From my end, I can't spend money you don't have. So, that's uh.
Budget is a working plan.
Yeah. It's the most.
As the year goes on. We get a three-foot snowstorm, literally throw everything.
Which, you know, happened not too long ago.
In twenty twenty, I remember the book.
Yeah. That blew our whole public works budget.
Yes.
It got done.
Did no.
We survived.
Other questions for fire team?
No, we're gonna thank you for your service and all the guys too. I know what it is.
Anyone else have any questions on fire? Okay, I guess we can move on. To code zoning and property maintenance.
Code zoning and property maintenance, this is eighty-five percent of. Uh, what is spent. It is wages and benefits, two percent is education and training. Twelve percent is obligations, which leaves just about four thousand nine hundred dollars in discretionary funds. Or. Other operations. The. Code enforcement and zoning uh, does include. Uh, property maintenance, a portion of the property maintenance officer is paid annually by the sewer fund. He was the former instrumentation tech for the sewer fund, so whenever he's called on. To go help out with an incident down there. He also is currently our only employee who has the class certification from D E P. To do and certify lateral inspections for wastewater lines. So every time he's tapped to do that, his wages and benefits actually come out of sewer, and they are budgeted in there as well. Uh, as this department. That being said, turn it over to. Cindy. Talk about, um. Accomplishments this year, but some big stuff happening next year.
Yeah, the first thing I'd like to start off with is my annual pitch for the rental inspection program and. Where we were at that last year and twenty twenty-three, we had a hundred percent compliance with the second ward. Rental inspection program. This year, we're the third ward, as of today. Um, we have a total number of structures in that ward that are occupied by, other than the owner. Of two hundred and thirty structures. The structures inspected are one forty-five and structures that are not yet inspected are fifty-eight. Um, by concentration, the third ward is probably the biggest ward for rentals. So those numbers are, in my opinion, and based on your path. So we have fifty-eight structures that need to be inspected by the end of the year. Donna, who is my clerk, my. Right hand and the person who keeps the office running. Makes a concerted effort at the end of the year to make sure that she makes phone calls that aren't warranted and aren't required. Um, sends emails, uh, does her super sleuth thing to try to find contact information for these property owners. To, in order to make sure that we do have a hundred, hundred percent compliance, so. Years that we do have that, I will say I attribute a lot of that success to Donna. So. My hint, hint to the press, if anything could be. Put in the paper, that's very, very helpful and I appreciate it. Um, the property maintenance program was probably our biggest accomplishment last year, the implementation of that. Um, my very shy property maintenance officer Caleb Rogers is here and has chosen to let me speak for him. Um, the notices of non-compliance that were issued this year were a hundred and two. There are the violations issued were thirty-six, ordinance violations eleven, condemnation orders two. And citations filed with the magistrate, ten. Uh, some of those that were filed with the mag, magistrate ended up in compliance. Um, as well as fines that were offered, or that were collected by the magistrate. Some of them not achieved compliance the first time around, but after a person received a citation and was guilty. Go to the magistrate or, and, and have their. Fine issued to them. If the non-compliance still exists, then we finish showing another citation. And we've had to do that in a couple of situations where a couple of citations were issued and after that. I think the property owner may have gotten it. Um, one of the other things that was accomplished. Originally by Katie, or Caleb and Abby. Um. We were awarded an R C I energy grant by the International Code Council. This grant gives the city digital tools for better enforcement and tracking of property maintenance, building codes, zoning, planning, G I M, and asset management. I believe that is a five-year program. A three-year program where we have been guaranteed. Funding through the grant to cover the first two years of the cost. Um, they're waiting for the next installation of the grant that would cover the third year. After that, if the city feels that it's a, a success. Then we are afforded the opportunity to purchase it on an annual basis. But we are one of. Three municipalities that apply for and got the grant in Pennsylvania, so. Who goes, Caleb and Abby for their hard work on that. Um, one of the bigger. You didn't jump in, everybody?
I don't, but just on that topic as. As portions of that top were come online, we have other softwares we'll be able to discontinue using. And so we'll see savings as that progresses throughout the year, where softwares that we have, some of which are very expensive. Will fall away because we have this opportunity for this grant, and its future cost will actually be less than. What we're currently paying for some of the separate softwares that aren't integrated together. So it's a really tremendous find. Thank you.
Um, one of our biggest accomplishments uh, for last year and this year was through the redevelopment authority. The sale of thirty-nine, or thirty-five through thirty-seven fifty-five Delphon Avenue. Which resulted in commercial building across the street that houses a medical facility. And a dental facility that was up and operational by. Late mid-October, um, and is flourishing. Uh, last I heard, for the medical facility, they had fourteen hundred patients that have transferred to that medical facility, so. It's a huge success. I would like to then lead into what I'm hoping will be a huge success for next year, and I have a presentation for that. But if you have any questions for me for the budget or anything prior to that.
But moving on this.
There, there's categories that went down and there's some that went up, and I think it's just the war. You just, you just switching the. You spreading it out.
That has nothing to do with credit, that's twenty-eight years of mine. You're welcome.
Um. Caleb's putting up some renderings for you. For you guys. Um, this is for potential development. One or two thousand per district, which is. We've been working with. Quandell Group. For probably the last. Six months. On the, the potential development of this site. They currently have signed sales agreement with current owner, Robert McGuire. With the contingency that they get the necessary approvals to move forward with this type of development. What they're proposing is to demolish the existing structure. From a forty-unit senior housing building. They're also proposing to create an onsite parking area that would house forty-six parking spaces. Funding for this project is anticipated to be through federal tax credits. Those tax credits put a age mandate on the residents for this property. So it is very strictly a sixty-two and older development. I specifically asked the question of Fred Quandell, who we have worked closely with. If you have a couple, a hundred. If you have a couple, a hundred and sixty-two and wife is sixty-one and the wife live there, he answers no. Sixty-two is a steadfast age requirement that must be adhered to in order for them to be compliant with tax credits that they're applying for. Uh, Quandell Group is very excited for this proposal. They have reached out to Steph and to Abby. Who I think she's meeting with them later this week for a possible sharing agreement, sharing a services agreement if the, yeah. If the development goes through, we're having clarification from the staff office for the resident of this uh. Of this building. Um, they also intend to reach out to Commonwealth University, Block Haven. About P A program and the requirements that those students may have. Uh, there's certain things that they have to do for us, community service, community involvement, so they're looking to reach out to them. See if there's something that they can do to engrave within the program. The proposed project is overall a thirteen to fifteen million dollar project. This is will be a taxable property. And will be a significant increase to the taxes that we receive now and we have since Mr. McGuire bought the property. Uh, about fifty-five hundred dollars, correct? We talked about that, okay, I should make sure it's correct. Um. Here's the digital element, the whole course of that, and the city gained no tax benefit from varsity. They intend to use local vendors for this project. They have talked to uh local contractors. They are, they have reached out to us for contact information for local subcontractors. Heating, uh, electrical, things of that nature, flooring. So we intend to give them all that information if it goes through. They do, however, require some uh approvals through the zoning hearing board. That meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, which is the ninth or seventeenth of December. Uh, at five-thirty here in Council Changers. What they'll be asking for is a use variance. Multi-family development is not one of the listed uses for residential low-density zoning districts. Which they are right on the cusp of, right across Bald Eagle Street, it changes to residential medium density where this would be allowed to use. They're also requesting that they be allowed to reduce their parking requirements from three parking spaces. To one space per unit with an excess of four spaces. Um, I I saw, I saw that cringe merit. I did some homework today, I went through and looked at uh some other ordinances. I was shocked to find out that Woodward Township, Flemington Borough. Mill Hall, Bald Eagle area, all have parking requirements that are tailored specifically to elderly house. Sixty-two or older. Um, also, the Borough of State College, Williamsport, Bellbon, Bloomsburg. The typical ratio is one to one, however, it, there are some that are reduced to point seven five. Based on the the genre of people that would be living in these facilities. Um, we have an need for this type of passing, we have waiting lists, I know for some of the counties in Flemington. Um, it is. You can see by the rendering, they propose a beautiful structure. Um, with the parking, the entry on North Ferry Street and the parking lot entrance of Bald Eagle Street. So they will be coming to the zoning hearing board meeting next Tuesday and making the whole presentation to the board. Along with examples of other places uh in in the state and. In other states where they have developed similar housing units and the success that they've had there, so. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that, that's something to do in sport. Certainly, your presence at the meeting next week would be. Appreciated, um. City, city staff sees that as a a big advantage for a property that has the potential to be a white elephant in the city for years to come. We've got a major development group that's interested in it and they're interested in making a fifteen million dollar investment in our city, so. We're hopeful that it moves forward.
So, uh, I think I just heard you say that I'm. Sure. Uh, you're saying that the existing building will be gone, and that building, a new building there.
Correct.
That this.
Correct.
Um. The difference between what is proposed there before is one, it's making a new building that that's, but two. That this is restricted to sixty-two and older, which the prior thing that was brought up. Lots of art was not restricted that way.
And handicap, handicap, it, you have that option too.
Right. I I cannot attend the meeting, I have prior engagement. The, to me, this looks like uh this compromise.
Well, and and the fact that we have some, the demolition of that building is huge undertaking, um, it it's very. It's not very cost-effective in most situations. In in this situation, we're talking about a big development company that has money to do so, and because they can do that and build new. It also affords them the opportunity to do some regrading down off South Jones Street and put in uh a size of the parking lot, forty-six parking spaces.
Yeah, I think the demolition is huge, because it. Trying to work with with the existing structure is what. Running out a lot of problems that we're looking at. I think it looks like a nice plan. The uh, the neighbors feel the same during. You know, there are changes in what's being proposed compared to what had been proposed before.
Yeah.
I.
Yes.
So I, Quandell came and actually invited all of the neighbors, meaning. Um, because I received postcards, I live half a block away from Kentucky. Um, it, I attended, um, council member, Missouri attended, and city staff. Quandell County Commissioner, it it was very low attendance, but so not many people showed up. But we were able to ask some really hard questions, specifically about the parking, because they knew that was an issue of the last. Um, that one was getting mentioned at the engine in that house, but I did not really know much about that. Um, and they really assured us they've done this in other areas, it's very well received, it's, it goes really well, this number of parking spots is. Equivalent to how many they need for staff and people living there, because when you're talking sixty-two and up. They're not going to have three cars for apartments, or like my house has four cars because we have four adults that live there.
True.
Um, they're going to have one or two cars and the tax credits that they're specifically applying for. Have a lot of rules around walkability, so the location. Of their apartment building has to be within a mile of certain things like the C V S and the Ys and the doctor's office and a couple others, so. This location specifically is actually very good for those tax credits that they're looking at because it is so close to Geisinger, it's right there and. C V S and all of the things that these people need to access are easily. So that it's just, they've really well thought out that this was a really good spot for this development.
And then Councilwoman Brandon brought up, I failed to mention, um. Quandell did reach out to all the people that were listed on the two-hundred-odd list for the zoning hearing board. Um, prior to the zoning hearing board meeting being scheduled. Uh, sent out mailers and invited people to a community outreach meeting that they had at. Community room at the staff office, um, and like Tammy said, if if attendance was low, we're we're hoping for that. Because it was uh received by the, the neighbors as unfavorable. Um, but they they did do their due diligence in in reaching out to the, to the property owners in advance of scheduling the zoning here, so.
Cindy, I think the other thing that we need to mention here, one of the things that we asked specifically. At the community meeting was about the property being professionally managed, and that is another. Thing that they assured us, there will be a professional manager, the person's not there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. But there is someone who is there on site who, you know, comes and goes and monitors. What's going on, who's living there, who's parking there, those sorts of things, so that it's not just.
Right, and and they have to, I believe it's annually, that they have to verify. Who's living there by by leases for residency and things like that, age requirements, um. And like Mark said, they won't have somebody that's there twenty-four seven, but they do have somebody that will be local. Um, within a twenty-mile range that will be available if any event of an emergency that they need to come down here for some. Situation.
There's also cameras, exterior cameras, exterior cameras.
Yeah.
Well, status I will be to see my grace will go by my head. It's a, it's a, a nice way to.
You might. So what are the next steps for, when would this potentially, this project?
Once they, if they receive approval from zoning hearing board next week, then they make applications for the federal tax credits. In the spring of, well, I'm sorry, in January of twenty twenty-five. They will know the determination of that, I believe the timeline was late spring or early summer. Till things get bid, um, as far as getting all the information for contractors and. Permits in place, they're hoping to have construction start at the beginning of twenty twenty.
What is it like to live near uh an entire elementary school that's being uh demolished? Can you answer that? I'm curious.
Well, I I can't imagine that it, I can't imagine that it would be much different than. How it was when we demolished the town tavern across the street, um, as far as, as far as being in. Quarters, um, we had to take that down, we had to take. Building side it down, we had to take the Hudson Myers building down, um, there was relatively. No interruption of traffic on Bellbon Avenue, which is kind of a thruway, um. This is in a residential area, so there'll be precautions for during demolition, that they'll make sure that. If it's dry, that they water the site down, keep dust for minimum and things like that, they'll have hours of operation for noise and.
Anything like that, okay, I was just curious.
Any other question? Steve?
I can't let you get by without saying. Long-range plans that you check other municipalities, and the requirements at their hand for parkings. Uh, I know we lost one housing development, uh, because the zoning hearing board said no.
Update.
Update, is there an update? I hope he replies, I encourage.
Yeah, actually appealed the decision.
Great.
Um, appealed the decision, which appeals to the zoning hearing board, go to the Board of Common Please. Uh, Frank Sully represented the zoning hearing board, Justin Hauser represented the city. Both of those costs are incumbent upon the city to pay. Because the zoning hearing board is its own entity, so the city is responsible for paying for our legal services and the zoning hearing board's service, so. It was a double whammy for us for the appeal, however, uh, we got the news on Friday that Board of Common Please granted the variance.
That's great.
So. Yeah, so that that's helpful, and I know where you're going with with your line of thinking.
Yeah.
Yes, Abby, Abby received a grant for uh a comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance. She's hoping to have an R F P out by the end of this year, so we can have a consultant on board by beginning of next year. That's one of the key points that city staff had to pass along to the consultant that we want to see this addressed.
Sure, especially in this uh type of category, uh, the double wide rentals. That may stay the same, and there's a reason for that too, living in a college town and all these rentals that we have here. But this type of development, this. And I'm, and that's very good news.
And you can see with the, with the uh that are submitted as far as the interior layout. Probably ninety percent of them are one bedrooms, um, I think if you look through that, there might be six, two bedrooms that they offer for. But other than that, it's one bedroom, we're talking about a potential of a maximum occupancy of two. So, and if it should be a husband and wife, they typically, at that stage of the game, have one car. This, this gives our, our. Our aging citizens an option that when they don't want to take care of. Their single-family home that they own, and they don't want the maintenance, they don't want the repairs, they don't want the tax liability. They can move into something like this, that, you know, brand new construction. Uh, very well, very well done based on the things that we've seen from other municipalities, and it puts their home back in the market.
I was just gonna say that.
So.
Being a house of a shortage, checking with three of, the other one would have freed up twenty-six possible houses, and that's the three of almost forty-one possible. Rent, uh, residential places that would go on the market, then handyman, plumbers, electricians. Painters, roofers, everybody benefits from that, it's a trickle-down for the whole community, the problem.
You mentioned your rendering, uh, if this is something you can share with us. Call it something.
Yeah.
Sorry. You put it up there already.
That's okay. One other thing that I did mention that has nothing to do with it, sorry, I have to make sure that Caleb gets the accolades he deserves. He has worked with HARA Registry all year long to get us up and running with our vacant property registry. That actually went live in the middle of uh November. And we've got two properties registered so far, and it was last week we received our first check from HARA. For money that they collected and passed along to the city, so.
Steve, do you have any more questions?
No. Is anyone else? I will say, um, at the beginning of council's budget book are several statistics. You can use those how you will, um, but I would say that with this particular project. Only fourteen percent of the city is age sixty-five or over. Um, typical of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is that eighteen percent. Um, would be that age, and so. There is an issue statistically long-term here, but at the older you get, the more likely it is you would leave our community. Instead of retaining this as your home, and so this helps solve one of those issues that I think we've had for a while. Um, you know, there's, there's certainly, um. A tether between senior living alone in this city is fourteen percent. People living sixty, or people age sixty-five and over are fourteen percent, those two are the same. So it's pretty typical that someone over the age of sixty-five in our community is actually. Living by themselves, which a one-bedroom is is perfect for. If you are still with your spouse or partner, the one-bedroom is still great. And there are options uh for you two bedrooms, but it definitely serves a need that you can see statistically. We want people to feel like just because they turned sixty-two or older, they don't have to leave.
Question, yes, actually, the first question is. When can I get on the waiting list? I have to. Double stone wants to get on that, what, on that waiting list? And the second one is, in your inspections of rent, does that include Airbnb's?
It. That's not. Um, well, I I shouldn't say that, it depends on how the Airbnb is being utilized. If it's somebody that is actually leaving their home and renting it out. Weekend, we put it on, yes, they're in bed. If it is classified as an Airbnb, um, like there, there. There was one in Center City, Lock Haven at one time, uh, that was used as, it was nothing but an Airbnb, it wasn't an unoccupied unit. Yes, that was inspected every year at any other rental.
Okay, thank you.
Amy? Not for Cindy. What you got? Page twenty-three. Fifty-one oh five, one five oh, and the four hundred. Last one, sixty-one hundred dollars. last one, sixty-one hundred dollars, and I added up the grants and donations, it doesn't come near to that, so, and everything's taken care of. Downtown, S P C A, border ship, I cross them all off. So is that something that didn't come through on your sheet?
Nope, you always have a surplus in there because someone always comes along and says, we would like you to donate. That's almost always a way to provide something to them, but that line item, the overage in there is what enables you to do that.
Okay. That just a hypothetical number that you picked compared to last year?
Yeah.
Do you know if somebody's coming forward?
Oh.
It has. In a way, I already, already see it, it jumped up quite a bit from sixty-six thousand to eighty-two thousand. I think eventually, seeing that that's directly general fund money again, the taxpayer dollars that we should try to hold the line as for services rendered to the city. I think that it's pretty appropriate that of the grants and donations, but we just still need to not allow that to continue to rise at such a twelve-thousand-dollar pace.
Council always has the opportunity not to spend. If. Anything else?
No. All right, and I'm going to move on to sixty, reading the ordinance, twenty-twenty-four dash zero six dot twenty-five budget. And ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash zero seven, setting for twenty-twenty-five real estate millage. The final reading.
This will be the final reading with adoption next week on Monday. The ordinance for the budget currently remains at thirteen million, six fifty-nine, oh eight-two for the five major funds, which are general, water, sewer, airport, and liquid fuel. The millage, as has been discussed, will come in at the same total dollar amount for the city in real estate taxes, and the millage on land will be at twenty mils, and on buildings and improvements will be at nine completments. And that remains the same since originally presented this book. Thomas, Rosens and Abens, I don't have any comments. Council?
Would anybody have anything from these that they, they are the ASONS or through home?
Murder mystery for the library will be called open thirteen, thinking that.
Thank you. Any else?
Sorry, one more thing, if the library, I told you space that there is an open position for the library director, and it is hosted through, I believe, January tenth. If anyone knows somebody with a master's philosophy of science that would love to live in Lock Haven and run our libraries with them, or double cam, that'd be great.
Any else?
Then the question goes here. If, for your general, you know, we're very short.